On our masters in California and then her sister Maya is.
Thank you for joining us. As usual, we'll give just a minute or two in order to let people join online and then we'll get started. I will now call this me, uh, school board workshop, uh, to order for South Beach School District number two zero six. We'll begin with our late acknowledgement, Director Jackson.
Thank you. We live, work and gather on the ancestral land of the Snohomish people. Land with great significance, past, present and future for uncountable generations of people of the Lower Skagit tribes. The Snohomish, Stillagwamish, Suquamish, the people collectively associated with the Tulalip tribes. People among us today, their ancestors for uncountable years and their family members yet to come. We thank them for their deep ties to and care of this land, these waters, the plant and animal life around us. And the relational qualities that they brought to and bring to this place so that we can all thrive today. I want to let our community know that I and others on our team are in deep consideration of how to keep our land acknowledgement practice. Vital and purposeful. Uh, and I think that we will have opportunities in the months ahead to discuss this question. But in the meantime, if you have reflections on what this land acknowledgement practice means to you or how it could evolve. Please do feel free to, uh, share those reflections with me via email. My email address is posted on the district website. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Jackson. Um, as this is a board workshop, we will be not just accepting, but, um, soliciting community feedback and discussion. This is our opportunity to discuss matters on the agenda with the community. If you were in person, please just raise a hand. We've got several extra mics because we have a number of folks who are not able to make it tonight. If you're in, uh, on the Zoom webinar and would like to make a comment, uh, please use the Q and A function just to note your name and location. Clinton Langley, whatever it might be. And then just enter that in first and then start typing what you'd like to say. That will let us know that there is a comment incoming, so we can pause, uh, for it to come in. And please put in entire thoughts rather than just, I agree with this, say what you agree with or disagree with. Because the conversation may have moved on by the time I get a chance to read it. Okay, we'll dive right into this. We have, uh, four major items on the. Uh, workshop agenda tonight. We're beginning with the budget presentation, Mr. Field.
Alright, so this is the fiscal year budget for September of twenty twenty four to August thirty first, also known as F one ninety five on the state website. Um, this budget is a working document. This is open. It's still possible to be changed, uh, modified. We're a long ways into the process, but there's still time to change it before it is adopted on our next meeting, which is the twenty fourth. So governmental accountings and fund accounting, we're going to go over five major funds today. The general fund, which is our largest fund, does the day to day operations of the school. The capital projects fund, which maintains our bond and levy activity, the debt service fund, which makes the repayments on the bonds that we recently sold. The associated, uh, ASB or Associated Student Body Fund, um, which is the students fund and then transportation vehicle fund, which pay buys yellow school buses. We're having this hearing because it's required by RCW, uh, twenty eight, eight, five. Um. So where this is open conversation where people can, we can rest, discuss the budget, um, and the needs, um, as required by RCW. So where we're at today, we're at July tenth, we're having our public hearing. July twenty fourth, we'll have a comment period just for, it'll be just discussion. Not a question and answer like we were having today. And then August first, we will get the budget adopted by OSPI. So, uh, state law also requires us to have a balanced budget, so we can't have negative fund balance. Um, and then we have a board policy sixty twenty is to have a minimum fund balance of one twelfth of the F one ninety five expenditures. So our budget is limited by that as well as how much we can spend. But we have this past legislative session, we had some significant items that happened. We had IPD increase of three point one seven percent. Our healthcare insurance increased nine hundred and thirty six dollars per year per person. Uh, the M SOX rate, material supplies and other costs increased by one point nine percent, which is the amount of funding we get. The special education funding cap increased from fifteen percent to sixteen percent, which will allow us to collect more, uh, special education funds. And then for our district, the experience factor decrease, I think for all districts, the experience factor decreased from two percent down to one percent. And we'll see that over time in some of the other sides as we move forward. Major issues affecting South Woodby, these are same issues that we faced every year for the last several years is enrollment loss. The state basic education funding model, which we'll go into detail about that, how that has not really supported South Woodby. Um, inflation and then underfunded and non-funded programs. So the prototypical funding model here, uh, things that have affected us is the McCleary decision. Our decrease in regionalization from twenty four percent down to eighteen percent. Our experience factor is being decreased from four percent down to one percent and it will be zero percent in the following year. And then the levy swap that capped the amount of funds that the. That's a base of, based on enrollment. So we're funded using the state proticable funding model, which is a staffing allocation. The number of staff that we receive is driven by the number of students that are enrolled in the district. That number of FTE or number of staffing is then multiplied by a funding amount by the type of staff. Type of staff that the funding model treats is certificated staffs are our teachers in the classroom, our classified staff, and then our certificated administrators, the principals in the school. Sorry. Get past on our classified staff or bus drivers, custodians, paras, office staff, uh, general admin. So this is the slide that really shows how our funding model has changed over time. So the blue bar shows the implicit price deflator that increased. Our funding over time, the amount of money that the state is going to provide us in addition to the base. The amount of money the state's going to provide us for the base dollar amount for staffing. South Woodby gets a regionalization factor based on where we live to help cover the cost of living and then an experience factor based on how. Educated and experienced our staff is in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, that regionalization was twenty four percent and the experience factor was four percent. And as you can see, as we move across over time in the green line for actual funding for CIS, which is the certificated staff. IPD went up in twenty one, twenty two, or twenty twenty one, one point six percent. But after our decrease in regionalization of two percent, the actual funding per staff base unit or the base staff unit only went up point one percent. And as you follow that green line through, the blue line goes up one point six, two percent, five percent, three point seven. But the actual increase in the base staffing for South would be one up point oh one, point three eight, three point eight and a five percent year. And then two percent in twenty three, twenty four. We're expecting three point seven in twenty four, twenty five. And the increase in the base staffing for a South would be certificated staff is only two point eight four percent. So when we talk about the prototypical funding model, not necessarily benefiting South would be. This is one of the things that we're pointing to. And when we have declining enrollment layered on top of that, the number of staff that were being funded is also going down. Regionalization is the only thing that applies for classified, classified and certificated administrators. And that's why you can see in twenty three, twenty four. IPD was three point seven and the increase for those two classifications of staff was also three point seven. It's the certificated teachers, uh, which is our largest group where the funding model doesn't line up with how we're moving through the year. So enrollment is what drives all of the funding for the school districts. So that's where we're heading next. One last shot at Mr. Pullman's glory from the twenty three, twenty four school year, um, just missing our budget by point two or two point two, three percent. Um, or point two, three FTE. Um, it's really admirable to try to get there. So we use the same criteria that he had used this year for next year's enrollment, but this was our starting point. This table here is showing that we're anticipating a decrease in overall FTE of twenty three point five six. But using those same methodologies, it's kind of a blend of the methodologies of a straight line roll forward. A cohort survival, a weighted average cohort survival. We also look at census information to try to get, um. Where we're anticipating to be, you always want to be conservative on our enrollment projection because that is what our state funding will start at from September through December. So if we're way over, um, on our enrollment, the state will fund us as if we're have that many kids and then come January, they retroactively correct the funding. So, um, if you miss it on the plus side and you've hired teachers for that, we're, we're stuck because those, those folks have a contract for the year. And that's ultimately going to come right down to fund balance. But on the other end, if you're way understaffed, it can be difficult to hire teachers. Once the school year starts, so it's a fine line. Um, and the methodologies over the years have been really consistent and close to where we need to be or where we want to be. I, I appreciate that. That is a extremely high bar. So.
I was gonna say, he left you room for improvement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, so summary of that, the basic ed, we're looking at one thousand twenty one FTE. Ale of sixty one, special education of a hundred and eighty, um, vocational sixty, uh, bilingual seven. And then, uh, running start, which we don't re, the funding we receive a running starts a straight passer. We receive the money, we pay the school and what's the students attending. So. Um, but that's what we're looking for, looking at for next year. All fund revenue. So our revenue comes from five sources, local property taxes, uh. Locally generated funds, uh, foods, think food service, running of the, uh, community center, state apportionment. State funding for categorical programs and federal funding for categorical programs, which is funding for a specific activity that has to be spent on that activity. We can think special ed, um, lap programs, things of that nature for the categorical.
I forgot, um, if I'm running my numbers correctly with the increase of the special education allocation raised to sixteen percent. With our estimated numbers, we would have one point five percent, one point six percent of our special education students not funded.
I would have to double check that, but it is going up and we'll see that in the special education funding that comes through. But to that exact percentage, I would have to double check that for you.
It's pretty close to covered. I mean, it's getting better. Awesome.
This is the pie chart and we'll get into a table that actually puts the numbers to it, but state special purpose funding is fifty eight percent. Excuse me, state general purpose is fifty eight percent. And then we have our. Special purpose, federal special purpose, local, local tax revenue. So that's our levy and then, uh. Non-tax revenue. I can't have all these pop ups on the screen here for a minute. So this is our levy, anticipated levy collection, the enrichment levy for the general fund. Twenty twenty four, the voters approved thirty, or three point five million in twenty twenty five, they approved three point six. Our levy is collected, our fiscal year runs September to August, so we're collecting part of twenty twenty four and part of twenty twenty five. So our anticipated twenty four, twenty five enrichment levy is, uh, three million, five hundred and fifty nine thousand. Uh, what the levy pays for, pays for everything that the state and the federal funding doesn't pay for. So all of our athletic costs. Our staff underfunded or not funded by the federal, fed their state are all of our M SOX or most of our M SOX. The M SOX allocation that we get from the state, even though it increased there typically only covers our utilities and insurance cost. So all the paper, printing, other materials that we buy outside of those two categories is picked up by our enrichment levy. There's a, we'll have a levy calculation slide letter that shows how much of the M SOX we're funding and how much we're spending on our two major programs. So this is our local revenue broken down in, in more detail, going down slightly. Our state revenue, so our apportionment and all the other programs, one thing to call out here is that we have state TK funding. You're going to see on the federal side that this, the TK funding zero, because now the state is picking that, those costs up. Our federal revenues that you can see the S R fundings are followed off that have been falling off for the last several years. We had our last little bit this year. So that's why there's two, there's two zeros at the top and the TK there at the top. That's what we're looking there. And this year we do have federal safety net budgeted. So that'll be helpful too with some of our high need situations we have.
Is, is that a more, more of a general purpose revenue or is that more of an earmarked revenue?
It's more of an earmarked revenue for students with extraordinary needs. We have to apply for it and make our case for the extraordinary need and then qualify for those fundings. Can't go into too much specific detail about what qualified us, but it is a program for a specific need.
It would be for any student IEP that costs more than thirty four thousand and some odd change, it changes every year, um, to implement. So any student whose, um, educational programming costs in excess of that, you can apply for the safety net reimbursement. And then, um, they will backfill for everything past that thirty four. So if we look at the apportionment for, um, each student, we get about. Ten thousand for each student and then with special ed, you get like another eight to nine thousand. So each student that's special education gets funded at about nineteen thousand per student. So we would still eat the difference between nineteen and thirty four, but then anything over thirty four is covered.
Thank you for that, Director Downs. Um, so here's our revenue summary. Uh, our total local revenue is, is fairly flat compared to what, so this is actual, actual and then budget for twenty three, twenty four. Cause we don't, we still have two months in the current year, but as we've looked over our month over month reports, our budget is laying right on top of our actuals for nearly everything that we have from last year. So I felt that was the best comparison, just to look like we're, we'll look at what we're budgeting last year, but compared to actuals for the prior, prior years beyond that. And that, you'll see that consistently going through on the summaries. So this helps paint the picture too of the changes from a clearly, McCleary and the battle that we fought is our. When we say our funding's been flat or our revenue's been flat, this is really what we're talking about. We had a jump up after the McCleary decision. But then that drawdown of a regionalization and experience factor over time has really kept our. Revenue flat and our decreased enrollment over that same period of time is what keeps our, our revenue from really changing year over year. This next slide here shows that from twenty eighteen, nineteen to our budget for twenty four, twenty five, our revenues only increased three point five percent over that seven year period. So that's when we say our revenue staying flat and the factors that we discussed there at the prototypical funding model, that's what's kind of driving our, our revenue situation.
And those two data points of twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three are S R funds.
Influx of S R, exactly correct. Any questions on revenue before I move on to expenditures?
We do have one, uh, comment from the community, but it's for expenditures. So I'll save that.
Okay. Just some quick, uh, quick, quick definitions here. So when we talk about employee costs, we're talking about salary and then the benefits that the district pays. Listed here of, you know, FICO Medicare retirement, um, the SEB reimbursement there that you can see is up to fourteen thousand dollars. It was around thirteen thousand and change last year. Viva contributions and the employees. Items, uh, M SOX or, uh, material supplies and other costs is everything that we've mentioned before. Big thing with our allocation from the state, it really just picks up like I said before, the utilities and insurance cost. So this is, so we're going to go through, there's three lenses that the state slices up this, that are expenditures over and over again, and those are program, object and activity. So we're going to go through those three categories and you'll see the dollar amount for total expenditure stays the same, but the category is just reshuffle. And that's just how the state looks at things depending on what they're trying to draw out of the information. So we're going to go through those categories. You can see here, regular instruction is our biggest piece of the pie, um, followed by special ed and that zero for federal special purposes, as I'm going clockwise around. That was the S R funds that we don't have anymore. And it's just showing there because of the comparative data that this table's pulling from. Um, and then vocational and the others running around the table on the next page here really shows what makes up regular instruction. I try not to read it all to you, but this is, gives you the real categoric, categorized items for each one of those slices of the pie down to, um. Down to the dollar. And again, it's actuals from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three. And then it's our twenty three, twenty four budget and our twenty four, twenty five budget comparison, just so we're all, uh, on the same page there. So you can see. Where we're making our changes there. And this, the table was so big, we had to go over to a second page. So overall, we're looking to increase, uh, our expenditures, one point one million dollars compared to last year's budget. This is the program expenditures without just kind of rolled up in the table format. So you can see without all the details. And you can see where we're making our, or increased spending in regular instruction, increased spending in special education. And then slight decreases in other categories and an increase in support. Go through the prior prioritization phases. This is where we start, uh, looking at those costs and where we're going to spend our funds as we continue. And we'll see this in the full year when we get the F one ninety five F as we're slowly making our way down towards that board, uh, minimum of fund balance. So the next way to slice the pie is through object, which is things most folks are a lot more familiar with, certificated salaries, classified salaries, employee benefits. Supplies, purchase services and that little tiny narrow slice of travel. Um, so we're going to go through the same format of the table that, um, doesn't break it out as wide because they're. Fairly self-explanatory what these items are. Um, so you can see where our increases are on the salary and benefit slide side. Slight decrease in supplies and a decrease in travel. This is the same information in bar graph form. It just kind of shows the, the trends in a different, different view, but it's the same information just in bar chart form. And then this is taking all of the employee costs compared to all of the non-employee costs. So you can really see where. The district spends its money and it's on our staffing cost and then a very small section. Switching over to activity. So again, it's the same information, same dollar amounts, just through that different lens. Uh, the accounting structure in the state has us coded all these ways. So we can make these different sorts of views and, and, uh, look through these different lenses. So teaching activity makes up fifty eight percent, followed by around the horn bidding, building administration, central administration, which is the district office. Other support services activities and then teaching support activities. And when we look at this through this lens, where you can see we're making the reduction overall is through building administration. So we had some retirements of building administration that weren't replaced. Uh, the duties were reassigned through TOSSAs and other means. But when we're looking through this lens, you can see where we made the single reduction and added our money in other places with it is at the building administration level. The teaching support line, that's, that's, it is the addition of paras, but there's also budget for a significant support service that we're anticipating needing this year to meet student needs. Around the tune of a quarter million dollars that's in that line. So part of it is additional paras that we hired through this year that we're continuing to carry on to the next year. And an anticipated need, uh, to meet student need. So this is the disclosure I was speaking to before about M SOX. Uh, the state is going to fund us for program zero and ninety seven. So that's basic ed and support services. One point five million dollars. Within those two programs, we're going to spend two point three million dollars rounding up. So our local levy is going to fund seven hundred and forty two thousand dollars of our M SOX cost. If it was the other way around and we were spending less, I'd have to explain what great thing we're going to do, but we've never been in that position.
And based on the, uh, slow increase in state funding for M SOX, I doubt any other districts are either.
That is likely very true.
Uh, before we move on to the other funds, I'd like to read the two community comments or questions that we have here. Katie Watkins Langley, I'm a parent of a middle school jazz band member, trumpet player, and want the board to know how much having this middle school jazz program means to our kiddo. And the rest of the growing musicians in our district. This program is vitally important to the growth of our middle school musicians and is a supportive program to the award-winning high school jazz band. These development programs feed into incredible opportunities well beyond their time at South Beach School District. We have seen this with our eldest, oldest child and will be heartbroken if the opportunity does not exist for our youngest, who's already hooked on music and specifically jazz band. Missing these vital years of growth will set these kids well behind other districts of comparable size. Please make sure that the middle school jazz program is a part of the budget. Uh, they're both on the same topic, so I'm going to read them both. Um. The other is, my name is Joel Berry and I live in Clinton. I have two children in the South Beach School District and with regards to the budget, I am imploring. That the board include as part of next year's budget, middle school jazz band. I realize the board is in a difficult position in respect to the needs of the district and the needs of the students. But our band program is award-winning at both the middle and high school level. Middle school jazz band is made up of kids who are happy to get up before school all year long and work so hard at an impressively advanced level for their age. Not only have these middle school jazz band students gone on to excel and take first place at multiple festivals. But they move on to our amazing high school jet, high school band who competently competes with top jazz schools all over the Northwest, and that is saying something. My son Wyatt looks forward to jazz band above all other classes. These are kids who may not be drawn to a sport or other club that find a safe place in band. Um, I know that Dr. Moshe, who is on virtually wanted to respond to these, so I'll turn to her.
Thanks, Brooke. Actually, we're not cutting, uh, middle school jazz band. The teacher who currently provides that program may not be doing it, but if that's the case and Chris Harshman chooses not to do it. We would host and hire for someone to fill that role. It is a club program before school. And it's a negotiated stipend through the, uh, teacher's contract. Um, so the position is not going away. So I want to reassure people that there will be middle school jazz band. Uh, where we will be making a reduction actually is in fifth grade band. There will be another, uh, special offered at the fifth grade level, not banned. Um, but we are not. We don't have a proposal in to remove middle school jazz band.
Thank you for clearing that up, Dr. Moshe. Um, I, I really appreciate the effort that goes into our bat, band and jazz band programs. And that they do as, uh, both of the community members, uh, either intimated or suggested or outright stated. Sweep up some students who otherwise don't have, um. Uh, extracurricular activities that appeal to them. So I, I appreciate that the budget as presented still includes those.
Christie has her hand virtually raised on Zoom. Did you have a question? Your, your hand, your virtual hand is raised on Zoom. Your, your hand, your virtual hand is raised on Zoom.
So i- if the community members have responses or further information, they're welcome to share them. But I think that covers the basic concern and I want to turn it back over to Mr. Field. Thank you, Dr. Moshe.
So now we're shifting gears out of the general fund into our other four, four funds, the capital projects fund, debt service fund, ASB fund, and transportation vehicle. So within the capital fund, we're going to have a new, a new light item that we want to have is when we sell the bond, which is going to fund in July, July 17th. So we have the capital levy, which can be used, we use it to update our technology and subscriptions to teaching software and other software to run the district is funded through that. And then other major maintenance and repairs and facilities. The capital bond is for more physical structural changes, more invasive, more long-lasting situations. And there is a little bit of levy, levy repair, maintenance and capital bond work. Those two things can overlap a little bit in what we're going to deliver. But the bond is for much more bigger items than the levy can typically afford to take on. So this is a capacity budget. All of these budgets are a capacity budget. We build the capacity so we can spend the funds if we need to. So we have our local taxes, which is the capital levy right around 2, 2,250,000 dollars. That rounding was situation to make it work in the OSPI system. It's 2 million, 2,250,000 dollars. And then our local non-tax report is likely going to be interest because when we sell 30 million dollars of bonds on July 17th, we're going to generate a lot more interest than we have in the past. That's why that's so much higher than we've seen in the past. The next section is expenditures and in capital world, you have site, which is buying land and improving land. So our playgrounds and things like that fall into those areas. Buildings is pretty self-explanatory and then equipment. So if we have to buy additional equipment to HVAC systems and things like that, if it's not caught as a building expense, it can be as an equipment cost. So those are, there's more categories, but we're not looking to use those right now for like selling costs. You'll see that next year when we get to the expenditures. But for now, that's the plan. We're giving ourselves capacity to spend 30 million dollars. The likelihood of us even coming close to that is not, but if something grand happens and we can, we want to give ourselves room to do so. So we'll be beginning the year with around 33 million dollars. And this is budgeted to end the year with two and a half million dollars. But again, this is a capacity budget. We're not going to spend 30 million dollars, but if we needed to, we would have the capacity to do so.
And my understanding on that is if you go under the budget, you don't need any special approval or anything. But if you want to go over the budget, you have to get special approval. And so this is to make sure we don't run into that.
To get a budget extension to, to go over. And that's how most of these funds are generated and set up to function in that way, with the exception of ASB, because we want the students to end, end with funds for the next year. The debt service fund pays the bond. I know Dan was celebrating in the past that we're going to make that final payment for all the energy upgrades we did. But we've sold the bond and now we're going to make interest payments on that bond. And that's what this is showing. This is very tightly aligned with our amortization schedule of what we're going to collect and what we're going to pay. And then as that money sits for a couple of months, we do earn interest on it. So again, beginning balance of 140,000 dollars, ending balance of 148,000 dollars. But this is purely to pay the interest on the bond. Like Dr. Joe raised her hand during that part.
No, I didn't. I'm good.
So this next fund is ASB. This is again, a capacity budget. We had to use, I had to use this year, a lot of historical averages. I time to get together with the students with the bond sale and the GCCM selection process become, became very intensive in the time I was here to try to meet with students. I've met with Mr. Summers and Kimmy Johnson to make arrangements with, when we get back to school, because there is some cleanup within the accounting system that we need to get for the students so they can best manage these funds. I've given them a capacity to spend 154,000 dollars. They've never come close to that, but again, it's a capacity funding. When we get to the new school year is when we'll start allocating that funds, the funds that they actually have in September to their, to their, their clubs and teams as a starting point. And from there, they'll manage the funds that they have. This budget is what the state allows them to spend. So I have to put in a number of what, how much money can they spend? And I've made it very fat. So if they have an awesome fundraiser and have the opportunity, they won't get stopped by my lack of budget capacity. But the work with the students will start in September when we clean up last year's August 31st, first balances, bring the new balances forward into September and then really work with the students. How are we going to fund the programs? What is the methodology? Does every club have to be revenue neutral? Or are we going to fund pet bands so we can do whatever we want to do? So those are the sorts of things we're going to do when school starts. We have a lot of new leadership in ASB at the, from the district level. We're sending them to the WASBO ASB training so they can get up to speed to make sure that we're living within the means and the spirit of ASB. So I'm really looking forward to this in the future. Next year, I'm hoping to have students have more input on this part of the budget. And maybe we can get into where we plan to push out their funds in September. I'm hoping September, October, we can bring forward where we landed on pushing the funds out they have to help have them participate in delivering. So we've been working towards that. I just didn't quite get to that spot here and from May to June, when I was here to try to work with them.
I, I love the intentional attempts to bring students more engaged in their own budget. I think that's fantastic. So thank you.
Yeah. Because this, this budget doesn't relate to actual dollars they have today. And they can only spend the money they have today. So they, they're related, but kind of not. Because once they're going to budget the dollars we have in the bank for them today, this gives them the capacity to spend up to this amount of money. Transportation vehicle fund is fund used to buy yellow school buses. This is 100% a capacity budget. We're going to collect 203,000 dollars in August of 24, 20, or in August of 25 for the depreciation of the buses. And then we can buy yellow school buses as Scott and team decide what we need for a replacement schedule. We'll be able to do so. But so we'll start the year with around 500,000 dollars. So depending on where we're at in the order process, we'll likely be able to buy 500,000 dollars of buses next year if we need to. I don't think there's a plan to do that right this minute, but if we needed to and could, we have the capacity. And then we just budget the extra money we get in August. If for some reason we can time buses landing in August, the funding landing in August and paying them, it's, it's just capacity. And these funds can only be used to buy yellow school buses.
And there's a balance there between the higher cost electric buses and the lower cost diesel buses that we still need some of, no matter what green initiatives we're pushing, because we have some routes that can't be served by electric buses, correct?
Electric bus could what?
We can serve the routes in our district with electric buses. The challenge is, is when we get those routes to trips, you know, sports trips that maybe go to state competition or whatnot, that go outside the range. Then it becomes more problematic. There are extended range buses now, which can get up to about 180, 190 miles, which with, which we can get at an additional cost. But we would have the funds to be able to do that. So right now we're assessing kind of how many of those buses we might need in the long run so that we can plan very intentionally to have the shorter range, the longer range. And then if we need to have diesel buses for, for those that fall outside that range, then we can do that too. By the way, we, we're having an issue with the charging of our current bus right now. So we're not buying any new electric buses until that situation is resolved. And I've made it clear to our vendor that that needs to be addressed. We're not putting more money into an electric bus until we get the charging issue resolved. And it will be.
Thank you.
So this is the certification page that just brings it all, all of the funds that we covered together and where we're going to be spending. It's another required high level page. So have any questions before we go on to the F-195F, which is the, the four year? So again, this is statutory. I don't put a lot of weight four years out or even two years out. You never know what's going to change with legislation and stuff. So there are some assumptions of just flat growth, flat expenditures, things of that nature, slightly increasing constant percentage going forward. Here's our enrollment projection. We have our current 2425 budget that we're looking at tonight. And then still kind of showing a, a slow decline. I'm hopeful that 2728 of around 1,000 students or 1,090 students is where we kind of plateau and start leveling out for the future. But it's, it's a educated, rule-forward guess at best. Revenue projections, same sort of a deal, just that percentage being applied across. Expenditures for those same categories. Again, just kind of pushing it out over the four year. There's a better slide here that shows our fund balance coming up. So this is total revenues and expenditures over that four-year period, still using fund balance at a decreasing rate through 24, 25 to 27, 28. With a fund balance in 27, 28 of 3.2 million dollars. That's still 13%. So it's a little bit over what we're nest doing, but we still just need to ease our way down to that board minimum, because then you start bumping up against it. So there, there's cushion there to, that's what this plan shows. There's a lot of assumptions going on, on how we're going to get there. Capital projects fund. I, in this plan, I have the bond being spent by 27, 28. That's a lofty goal to actually get all of those funds spent as we start working in this, but we'll have a better idea this time next year. And as the plan's actually coming to shape, what's that bond spend going to look like? In the revenue section in that 25, 26 year, we're showing a second bond sale. I have it in there that we're going to sell it all at that time, but that's still up for conversation as well. There's still a chance that we'll do a, a second and third tranche of the bond approval. But for now, it's just in there as if we're going to sell it at that point. And then you see the levy, local levy is the levy that Scott manages with the technology and the, the maintenance. So debt service fund, this is again, is paying the, the bond. You can see, and this is really closely tied to the amortization schedule of the first bond sale. It'll likely change during the second bond sale, but for now, you can see in that second year in the bond issuance that we just did, it's going to fund on July 17th. We did have a two-year bond and that's what that 630,000 dollar is, is back of the principal of that set of bonds. So it's a lot different than it has in the past with that one payment over and over again. This is the ASB budget. Again, I have a, just kind of staying flat and spending what they're doing. Slightly growing, ending fund balance, because that's what their trajectory has been as of late. They're revenue positive the last couple of years. With more input, I'm, I'm hopeful with more input from the students and the team that we have a new team that's really excited that we get to money in, money out. The kids raise the money for what they want. They spend it for what they want. And again, more robust activities in the ASB. Transportation vehicle fund buys yellow school buses and it's just a capacity. I budgeted this year that we're going to spend it all. Next year, we would get our depreciation, but not time to buy a bus because it comes in August. And then 26, 27, we buy a bus. You wait a year, you buy a bus, sort of. The link here takes you to our folder for the bond or for the budget on the district website. And there's the full F-195, the, the preliminary F-195 is on there. There will be some slight debt service changes during review. I, I change our payment, but it's immaterial. It's just balancing on, on the state website where we have to upload our budget. But otherwise, other than that, that is what was in this presentation. It's all 155 pages of lots of stuff. Go nuts. We have any questions?
I don't have a question, but a comment. I just wanted to express, as Director Williford shared, how exciting it is to see student involvement with ASB budgeting. And I think about what an educational opportunity that is for students that they get to learn from you now, what I'm learning now in my 40s. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I enjoy ASB and I'll do as much, make as much time as I can to be involved. But then the folks that we have coming on are really excited to be a part of that and are eager to learn what we can and can't do and how to get the students involved. We, we have some initial cleanup in our current system, just things that just need to be corrected that happen over time, getting the money into their starting account. Like this is how much we have. What do we want to do? And I've already got some feedback of this is how much we give each team. All right. Well, let's start doing that. So I have a plan, but I can't do anything until the students say, yes, let's do that. Clean it up on August 31st, push it out on September 5th. Here's your guys' starting point and then check on them with them periodically. So maybe we can bring their report twice a year, like this is where we, how we push out our funds and this is what we're doing. And then we can show the success of fundraisers and stuff. So still need to work out that out with the team that's taking on ASB now to see what's reasonable and what they're willing to do. But I, I will make time to do so.
Thank you.
First off, thank you so much for this presentation. I know Mr. Pullman left big shoes to fill, but I'm really impressed with your first budget seminar. And it was really just as good as his, which is a high bar.
I appreciate that. He got me a long ways down the road with that physical budget this year. But yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm also really happy to see that at least a projection for us to stay solvent as a district for the next four years. I think that's something that maybe not very many districts can say. So it's good to see that with those assumptions in place that we're on stable footing. My question is, can you go a little bit more into some of the trade-offs or decisions that got you to this budget and specifically how those were made in alignment with our goals and values as a district? And here's questions for both you and Dr. Moshe.
So the prioritization, I believe Dr. Moshe will be best to speak to about how we, the priority prioritization that was made to how this budget was developed. I know we spent a lot of the paras that we brought on in the current year. It was determined that that is a need that we need to maintain. So that meeting that student need with the para educator specifically. There's some special ed teacher hiring that was needed to maintain, and those were the priorities beyond that part. I'd need to lean on Dr. Moshe. I was here at the very end of our.
I'm right here, Paul. You're doing great.
All right. So that's.
So the no, I was just going to say, what we're really pleased to be able to say is that have some attrition. We were able to maintain all of our teaching staff. We will know before September whether or not we need another kindergarten section that we held in abeyance because we just don't know if the students are going to come. We did have to expand our special education program, as Paul said. And we would have loved to have expanded our mental health opportunities for our students, but we really just had to maintain status quo on that because of our, our need to add teachers and para professional staff. Because we do have some students who are demonstrating some really significant needs, especially at the elementary level at this time. The good news is that we're also putting some funding into our staff professional development. I talked a little bit about that last month. The fact that we are helping all of our staff learn how to deal with significant challenges for students. We're doing that by having monthly trainings and so on. So again, we, we are really actually pleased with the budget we're able to present to you because we really didn't have to do the significant reductions that we thought we may have to do. Between Paul and Dan, they really brought home a budget that it does impact our, our fund balance a bit. But we have some room there. So we're hopeful. And we're hopeful that the legislators will make some decisions next year that benefit all districts. So I hope that answers your question, Joe. We didn't, we didn't have to make significant reductions. We did some trimming to things and we certainly didn't add in places that we hoped we could. But that, that's how we came to this budget.
It does. Thank you.
And one other comment about the F-195F, the four-year per And one other comment about the F one ninety five, F, the four year projection and showing that we're solvent, I mean, the, the assumptions we're making are absolutely reasonable. And it came up during our bond rating call. The districts that continually show that they're going into the red, that it affects their bond rating, cause they look at that outward projection. So ours is the assumptions we made are absolutely reasonable and how we're going to continue to draw down our fund balance. But that was kind of a an eye opener to me that you really need to take de- dedicated time to make sure that's as accurate as we can, cause especially with our continuing bond sales, we want that to be accurate and, and as truthful as possible.
Are there any other questions or comments? So uh, Ms. Rose, if you've got the mic right there, or you can use one of the uh, long necked ones if you prefer.
Hello, is that working? I'm Rufus Rose. I'm curious, and I'm not sure this is your job. That may be part of it. With the electric bus versus the diesel bus business, is there an effort in the district to track the comparative differences? Uh, the notes that I have here are the cost, the utility. The, the diesel fuel costs X and will change over time. Electricity costs Y and may change over time. And how much we're using of each and how it relates to the different units, the different vehicles. I think you mentioned something about scheduling and, and potential distance to travel. As, so I don't know if it's the budget guy that does that, or if it's you directors, but is there a, is there a an intention to compare the utility of electric and diesel buses because of the newness of that industry and some of the, the road bumps, no pun intended, that the electric vehicle world is going through.
I can, I can try to help answer that. So the electric school bus costs about two and a half times as much as a diesel school bus. And the one that we got, we got through a grant. The great thing about the grant is we paid the cost of a diesel bus to get that electric bus. But we get the depreciation from the state on that electric bus cost. So you have to figure that in when we're trying to figure out what is more, more cost effective to run an electric bus and a diesel bus. The truth of the matter is with an electric bus right now, there's not enough data on any school district on how well they run. Every district that I know that has an electric bus has had to take it out of service at some point, be it charging or battery issues. So they're still working out that technology. So I don't know that we have enough data today to see what is going to be better in the long haul. We can estimate what the cost per mile is for a diesel bus and just assume that there's no fuel cost for an electric bus, cause the electric charging is minimal. But that comparison, there's just not enough data of keeping electric buses on the road to see over the long haul, what would be the best decision for us to do to go to an all electric fleet or to continue down a high efficiency diesel road. So we will monitor that once we can keep our electric bus that we're having charging issues with on. But to go to a full electric fleet, that would take a significant investment. Likely coming from the general fund or some sort of a levy to raise money to get to an electric fleet, cause they're so much more expensive than a diesel bus. But as we get more information, we will, we can try to track what is the cost to run an electric bus. But when it's not running, it's, it's hard to gather the data on that right now.
And I would just add that there's really two levels that we need to be thinking about it with. One is the cost, which is certainly an important consideration. The other is uh, the functionality, which includes also the charging infrastructure that not only in our own district, but also in the districts and the areas around us and how we navigate that. Right now it's very underdeveloped across the state, especially for large vehicles that are electric. So we really need to look at that as another factor in deciding how mu- how far we, how quickly we move on electric buses, so that we're not getting ahead of that infrastructure or the capacity to actually maximize the benefits of that bus. So we need to do the cost, but we also need to look at the actual functionality of how the systems that support the bus work.
The world I came from was aviation. Where we'd get new models and, and we kept scrupulous records about how they were working, uh, what inconveniences or superior uh, operate. So I'm wondering, are there logs that are kept now for each of our bus vehicles regardless of type? Whether they're, they're downtime, the, the maintenance required, all of that stuff. So we can, is it being recorded rather than just observed? A record is easy, is easier to reference than memories. So I'm wondering if, if logs are kept about this obviously unfolding world. It's, it's a new thing. So I'm wondering how much paperwork is involved with that.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And we do keep records. We keep records of our maintenance. We keep records of our fuel usage. We keep records of all of those things. And then as time develops and we get consistency in the data points, then we're gonna be able to pull that together and be able to identify trends and comparative points between the diesel and the electric buses. Right now those points are a little difficult to put together because we're still trying to figure out all the different components that are part of it, having an electric bus versus a diesel, but we do keep records on our diesel buses and what we maintain, what we put into those buses when we repair them. How often each bus needs to be repaired, what kind of repairs need to be made and the costs. And so as we get better with the electrical buses and understand those moving parts, we'll be able to compare those things much more fully, I think. But as you said, it's an unfolding process.
Is there a calendar associated with that? Do we, do we review history at certain data points, or do we just wait until we feel like it?
I would expect that before any decision to expand the fleet significantly, the board would want to look at those comparative experiences in other districts if we don't have enough data points here, but also in our own district.
But in, in terms of our record keeping though, yes, we review those things most certainly uh, every time a bus is touched, but annually we're required to provide that information. So uh, yes, we keep those records and they're scrupulously kept by our transportation department.
I would add that in addition to the two uh, considerations of cost efficiency and functionality, there's a third consideration of impact, local and global impact on personal and planetary health. And so I think about things like what can the industry provide in terms of a life cycle analysis of that technology? And I think that we're gonna start to see the, the green claims of electric vehicle technology getting stronger as we start to develop more regional infrastructure for battery recycling, for instance. And right now with a fairly new industry, there are some gaps in how to manage the technology for human and environmental health. And you know, there are issues with ethical sourcing of the heavy metals that go into batteries and so on. And so I would just like to stay abreast of the evolution in the industry and its practices and see whether the green claims get stronger over time.
Yep. Uh, from a community member, uh, my name is Kai Nelson and I live in Clinton. I have two students in the school district and both are in band slash jazz. I've heard rumors that the fifth grade band is going away, which is a big disappointment. Stopping the fifth grade band program kills the momentum the band program uses to help students, most of whom are new to music, start with an instrument. Many of these students do not play sports or are involved in other activities. Band is a safe place for these kids to be themselves and to flourish. I would ask that the budget allows for more than the twelve hundred dollars Chris Harshman gets per year to teach and direct the middle school jazz band. I don't know how this compares to other clubs slash coach leaders. Chris is doing this a full school year, not just a season. The band plays for the local community as well as goes to festivals where they learn from professionals slash adjudicators on playing and performing. This helps them grow as musicians and active community members. Thanks. Dr. Moshe, do you wanna?
Yeah. Um, so yes, all of these decisions are difficult to make. And Chris Harshman does an amazing job. With regards to the stipend, as I said, that is a negotiated stipend through the teacher's contract. Chris has accepted that stipend for many years. And so as I said earlier, if Chris doesn't want to continue doing that in steps away, we will look to recruit someone else. But yes, we, we've made a decision at the elementary level that because we have one band teacher and he is in every building. We reduced him to a full time position rather than a one point two position. And that was a difficult decision to make. We've made some trimming across the district and that was one place where we did that. Because we fully believe that now that sixth grade is in the middle school, it's a much better situation for students to have Chris in one place to provide more time uh, at the six twelve. Again, I, I appreciate that people are concerned about fifth grade band. Uh, we're concerned as well, but we did have to make some difficult decisions and that was a place that we felt we had enough support at the elementary level for students to have a specialist several times a week in music, in art, in garden, in library. So though it is not banned, they still will get music at the, at the elementary level. So appreciate the concern. And again, I've reached out to Chris more than once regarding his concern about the stipend, but once again, that is uh, something that's negotiated. So it's not going to change. This contract is in place through uh, twenty twenty five.
Thank you for providing that information. I also appreciate that there will still be a capability for uh, elementary school students to receive uh, music instruction, because I do agree with the uh, community member that uh, that's a very important part of that time of experiencing different things to find what your passion is, so you can have the opportunity to follow that passion as you go through the school district. Are there any other comments or questions on the budget? Okay.
Make one comment, which is just um, the thoughtful four year projections. I take heart in thinking about what might be possible for an enrollment turnaround as our community starts to develop the affordable housing that's needed. And I really can anticipate that in four years, some of the solutions that are being thought up now might be in place and providing homes. And so that's a, a point of hope for me that the gas about enrollment steadying may be a very well educated one. So thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to our facilities presentation. Uh, Mr. B. Clark.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first I wanted to start off with an update. We had a water main break yesterday. Uh, and I just wanted to tell you a little bit about that, give you a little bit of background. I want to give you an update on where we are on the repairs there. Yesterday, as you know, yesterday, as you probably know, yesterday we were doing soil sampling. It was drilling around the district at both the elementary and the high schools. And um, the company that was doing the drilling the last few days was at the high school yesterday out in front uh, on the northwest corner. And they hit a water line. It was the, it was the fire suppression system water line, an eight inch line that goes into the building. So one that puts out an awful lot of water. And uh, we saw that. Um, so I was in the ferry line holding area as I got a call. At five minutes after they hit the line and uh, we uh, you know, Paul, my friend Paul was here. Mr. Field was here on site uh, to help until uh, I got back and uh, the team, my, the maintenance team was either if they weren't here, came back in and helped as well. But uh, I called um, King Water and Nick Fuller at King Water and they were able to bring in uh, an excavator. And he was able to pull together a team to come in and take a look at the situation within an hour. And um, we were able to get a uh, someone to come in and dig up that site. We also were able to right away go over to the uh, pump house across the road and shut off the pumps and figure out where some of the valves were so that that water could get shut off and we can minimize the flow over into that uh, over to the site across the road. We were able to do that. We still were getting water feeding in overnight due to gravity from the system. But then this morning we're able to find a couple other valves that were able to shut it off entirely. But um, we were able to clear out the, the hole overnight. We had an excavator come in, expose the pipe. King Water came in this morning with their team. They were able to clear that area out, find out, figure out where the hole was and where there were any cracks that extended from that hole. They were able to cut out about a three, four foot section of pipe and put a new section in and get it clamped down and get it repaired by early afternoon. And then they spent the afternoon flushing out the, the um, uh, fire hydrants. And we're gonna have commercial fire come in and flush out the sprinkler systems. Make sure we don't have any problems later there. And um, they've filled in the hole and it looks pretty good over there. We're gonna seed it and we should be ready to move on. We've got a, tomorrow the maintenance team is gonna go around all the, the, the buildings and in the classrooms and flush all the toilets several times, run the faucets and clear out the system of all the brown water that's been created because of the dirt that got into the lines. And so these things don't tend to be things that you can fix and walk away from. They tend to have extensions out at days afterwards that we're gonna have to deal with. But at this point, at least the system is up and running and we have domestic water and we have our fire suppression system back up and running and things are moving forward again. So really appreciate the hard work of the team here as well as King Water and you know, some of our partners who were contractors who came in and helped us get through this crisis and do it very efficiently in the last twenty four hours.
Really appreciate the quick turnaround on that, um, particularly when there's so much water going out there and we're on Aquifers here and we don't want to waste that. So appreciate that. You, you, the, both of you and your teams were able to uh, get on that quickly and that King Water was able to come in have a, what seems to me an amazingly quick turnaround. So thank you both.
Did really well. We did have some water that we had, it was a lake down there. Quite literally, and the water was getting up to the doors in the front of the high school. And there was, there was some water that got in the doors at that north wing and got in and we did have about maybe fifteen square feet of carpet that got some water on it. Our custodians were able to extract the water quickly and get it dried out with some snail dryers. And then some water got into the girls bathroom off that hallway there. But again, it was cleaned up very quickly and there wasn't any damage inside the building. So.
Within the hour.
Yeah, it was, it was.
They saw it happen and came down with the extractor and it was clean and extracted and dried within an hour. So, and it wasn't all that much water that got out of the door. So it was air right there.
Yep. Alright, so I'm really happy to be here to talk to you about projects that uh, we're working on across the district since I've been here in May, since Paul and I came, joined the district in May. Got about thirty two, I figured today it's about thirty two projects that we're managing around the district at this point that are addressing various needs. And for the purposes, I wanted to make sure that you could see how those projects are aligned with the priorities that have been identified in the levy proposition that's going on the ballot. So looking at uh, you know, safety, construction, renovation are the three areas indicated and under gent, very broad areas indicated under the levy and where the pieces that we're working on right now fit within that. But the important thing I think that I wanna weave through this talk is the idea that we're not, we're not just fixing problems. But we're having to think about that the maintenance team, the custodians, working with contractors, thinking about how these different projects come together, thinking systemically. Thinking about the fact that why are we in the place where this is needs to be fixed now? What does it tell us about what we need to do? How we need to think about maintaining systems in the district in a timely manner, setting up schedules. But also making sure that when we fix something, we're thinking about the impacts of that repair on other parts of the system. So that when there's a domino effect, we're prepared for a domino effect, even when we fix things, there are things that then, you know, we have to think about. So organize it that way. Everything that I'm gonna talk about tonight is funded through the levy, the capital levy that we have, the funds that we have right now. And um, what I'm really thinking about moving forward, I just wanna say this upfront, is as we complete projects and there are many that the community is gonna be seeing over the next six months, making sure that they know they'll through signage or some various forms of communication from the district, that their levy dollars are paying for those things. So that it's clear where there's the payoff for the community and especially for the kids. So there's just a lot of pieces that weave into the process of figuring out what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. There's a lot of collaboration and a lot of conversation and a lot of spending time with staff. So when we look at this first section, look, I when we look at this first section, look, I organized around health, safety improvements. So I'm highlighting a few, um, several general areas where there are projects underway and I'll talk about examples of those projects. I'm not gonna be able to get to every single one tonight because there's just too many right now. But when we think about water systems updates, we're talking about primarily upgrades to the pump house up the road. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the specific things that we're working on. But basically wanting to update pumps, wanting to update panels up there. Uh, monitoring systems for the chemicals that we're testing for right now that can be monitored electronically and have been in the past, but currently are not. Septic system updates, primarily at the high school. You know, we've got a major system up there which is working pretty well, but there are components of the system that are not. Some of the panels up there, some of the pumps are old. Again, I'll talk about the specifics of some of that in a minute. Roofing systems. Roofing. Especially where we're seeing the highest priorities right now is at the community center. And again, I'll talk about a couple of the projects at the community center. But that's where we're seeing the highest priority needs right now where roofs are, have either active, have failed or are actively failing. There are other places in the district, district office, for example, where we have a next level priority that we need to think about in future levy, you know, using future levy dollars to address at the south campus. HVAC repairs. We're finding out that systems are not working that we didn't even know weren't working. We've got monitoring systems in the district, but sometimes you don't know unless there's a report of a problem when you go into the monitoring system to know what the issue is. So currently this week, we've got Morgan Mechanical out here. I've got them going through every single HVAC unit in the district. Identifying any issues that maybe there's so that they can all be cataloged. We can get estimates and we can prioritize those things and determine what gets fixed, what we wait for to do. Cause there's a big question on this as to what we wait to do with the bond and what we have to address now in order to get to the point where we address it through the bond and replace things through the bond. And that's a tough, that's a tough question.
I just want to mention that Scott and I are in coordination of what, what's gonna be covered by the bond. It is in bond specifically, which in HVACs. But this work will be able to leverage with our bond work as well as we get identified HVAC system. So it is two different fundings. I know there's a question about how we're going to track what is what. We can do that through the accounting system. But Scott comes to our meeting, he's a main member of our meeting every Monday with our architect firm about what we're doing to make questions of, is this in scope or out of scope? So we know we're not double dipping or crossing over the, the projects.
And in some cases, our engineers that are working there are actually resources to help me identify ways to think about or address some of these issues, even though they're not bond-related.
And I heard you say community center, which is not gonna be touched by the bond. So it's good that we're able to look ahead and see, we're going to be doing a bunch of work with the roofing and HVAC systems at the middle high school because of the bond. So we can focus those dollars elsewhere. So that's.
Yeah, right.
Our bond is for the building that our students are in. The level, we have other buildings in the district that we still need to maintain. So where we use some of the levy dollars is that.
I think of it as like puzzle, pieces to a puzzle. We're just trying to put that jigsaw together and figure out where the levy can hit some of those pieces and where the bond can restructure some of the overall systems on a larger scale, which is essentially the definition between the two. Moisture mold mitigation. We've had a lot of leaks related to the roof issues. We've had a lot of leaks over the years and uh, in a few places we have play, uh, identified mold and moisture issues that are getting addressed right now. Again, community center and also the south campus. And I'll talk about those in a minute. Elevator updates that gets us to a little bit have um, and overlaps a bit with ADA access, but also making sure we are addressing the up elevators is particular at the middle school, high school. And we've started to do that uh, so that we have systems that are working consistently there. So we've started some improvements and repairs there. So that they work every day when kids need to access those. Chemical removal and management, this is one I, when I took this job, I didn't even, I wasn't really thinking about that. And then I got a health inspection report from the high school, which was showing these chemicals in the science lab. And I went and you know, as I'm doing every day, going out to buildings and actually seeing. And I'm like, wow, there's, and you'll see the pictures here in a minute of all the chemicals at the high school. Well, then I realize as I'm starting to ask about, well, where else do we have issues with chemical removals? I'm realizing we have twenty drums of chemicals. Diesel solvents, um, oil down at the transportation building that's never been addressed. So then I'm thinking, well, now this is a bigger issue that has to be addressed on a larger, much larger scale than I ever anticipated. So a, what's become a huge priority from something that was really started out as a salute, trying to solve a, just a, what seemed to be a relatively simple problem became a very big priority. And then fencing improvements. Again, one of those things where I'm realizing as I'm out and about talking to coaches and staff, we have some issues with safety around fencing. Which led to me to bring in McBride fencing and we did a walk around of all the fencing at the high school around the athletic facilities and assessed and have gotten, you know, estimates on repairs for the fencing, which is on a much broader scale than uh, I ever anticipated. So as we go to the next slide, you can see some examples. Uh, I'm gonna start on each slide on the upper left-hand corner and just go clockwise. But if you look at the top there, that's really highlighting just some examples of the chemicals that we're dealing with across the district, primarily at the high school and the transportation and maintenance building. But the two pictures on the left are really giving a sense of those containers. This is all in the science storage area between two eleven and two twelve or two thirteen, I guess it is. And there's three cabinets, like the one in the middle, that's full of chemicals that go back to the nineteen sixties. So many of which are not even, we don't even know what they are, which means I can't, we can't even take them up to the county to get rid of. And then you see the drums up there. We have drums all around the transportation and maintenance building, which have to go. So Clean Harbors under state contract, which is much cheaper is coming in. They've inventoried this and they're gonna haul those out in about a month. I've gotta go through. I don't know how many pages of paperwork to get all this done, get this registered with the state and the federal government, but we're gonna get there. Uh, you can see over on the right-hand side, uh, that's the, a picture of one part of the pump house. There's a couple of pumps there. We've been working for the last several years with just one of the two pumps that are supposed to cycle and there's only one pump sending water out to the entire district. We're one pump failure away from not having water on a school day. So this is a high priority. Interestingly enough, at benefit of today, when we were, went over and fired the system back up. The second pump started working again. The panel, uh, the panel that needs to be replaced there suddenly worked. I don't know what we, I don't know. I somebody touched it or something. I don't know. Anyway, but that needs to be done. We've got uh, a sense, flow sensor that's leaking water and has been for years in there. I don't know how many gallons of water. We've gotta get that fixed. There's just, there's a lot over at the pump house that needs to be done. Including just cleaning it up and painting it, making it, getting it back to the point where you walk in and it looks like a place where we ought to have water going through. You know, it's, the, inside the lines are fine, but when you look at it, it's just like, oh, we've gotta get that fixed. So down below in the lower right-hand corner, you can see some fencing, just sharp edges along the fencing where poles have come loose or broken off, metal fatigue. And all around the perimeter is, as we, Jackie and I walked from the other day from um, McBride, we just found all kinds of places where kids can catch their skin on something or go for a fly ball. All of that has to be fixed. So we're, we're, we're working on that. Over here is just a little bit of an HVAC. We've got issue. We've gotta work on both the control systems as well as the actual units. So Allerton, our control system people are coming in Friday. They're gonna have a list of things to do Friday because I've got them for a day. Yes.
I just wanna stop you for a sec because uh, I'm thinking about it and I just wanna be clear with, with our community and our board that the fact that we have a levy allows us, I mean, uh, the fact that we have a bond allows us to actually use the levy for all the things that we would have wanted to have used the levy for. But because we were addressing issues that really were bond issues. That, that's why it's, it's coming to life. Cause I can only imagine just sitting here and listening like, well, what do you mean it's been years? How come you haven't addressed this or that or the other? And I just wanted to kinda bridge that gap as to why it's so clearly becoming something that we can address now. And by the way, thank you for all that you're doing to do that. You and Paul, but thank you, Scott.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah.
Just echo Scott's presence in the school. He, he's out there every day at every site, digging in and, and bringing these things forward firsthand. Eyes on the situation. So um, he's a great addition to the team.
Well, thanks. Um, you know, all these things are coming to light as people are telling me. You know, and the interesting thing is, is the, is, as Dr. Mosher pointed out, there's so many things that have been addressed through the levy over the years. And with the bond opening up that opportunity to then channel this money in mu- much more targeted way. Has allowed people to start to get a sense that things are getting that things are getting done in a concentrated way now. And it's not being spread out so much that they're coming forward now and starting to talk about what needs are. What needs there are in the district. And so it's just a snowball effect that we're starting to see now. And I'm getting more and more of these kinds of reports. And when I, when we address one issue, then somebody will say, oh, but there, we can't do that until we do this, you know? So it's just there's these layers that we have to work, that we can work through now that couldn't be done before because it was so much about just solving problems. Instead of addressing systems. So um, and then you, so we've got the heating control, the units, we're working at both levels on that right now and identifying where we can where we can get things corrected so that we uh, support the work that's happening in the bond down the road. And on the far corner there, you see sinks. We, health report indicated we really had some issues with sinks in our science labs. So we're replacing, we're starting from um, the valves underneath the counters and working out and up, replacing sinks, fixing faucets and getting all twenty-two sinks in both science labs at the high school completely redone so that they're usable again. Cause many of them are shut off at this point because there's leaks or there's issues and they're gonna be working. They hopefully will be all working by fall and functioning. So we'll go to the next slide. Uh, again, more needs, uh, starting at the left-hand corner. We had more moisture and mold. We had a uh, a leak, a water leak, uh, two water leaks actually this last winter, almost spring, when we had a cold snap over here in the south campus. And so that um, water went down into the two bathrooms next to the south campus gym as well as the office. We had the, that once those leaks were addressed, we had to address the water issues and moisture issues in there as well as mold issues. So we had Service Master come in. Rose Environmental, we had to do controlled demolition in all three spaces. And now we're in the place where that's done and we have to rebuild the spot now. Similarly, at the uh, South Whidby Community Center in the south hallway. Um, there uh, was water that was getting in that hallway over a period of time. And we were able to get the, the drainage system diverted on the roof and fixed. So there's no more leak in the hallway. Once we took care of that, we had to bring again Service Master in to mitigate that issue. There was a lot of moisture in the ceiling, in particular the upper walls. So we're mitigating that issue. And then again, we've gotta have contractor, it's gonna be Valdez Construction managing several subs to come in and actually get the hall, these two spaces restored. Roofs, couple of examples, uh, we're gonna have the multipurpose room at the southwest, uh, excuse me, the South Whidby Community Center is gonna be redone. That's actively failing right now. Um, and so we've gone to, we went to a uh, yeah, a bid process with that, with some contractors with the help of Garland. And uh, we're gonna be getting that done this summer and early fall. And then you can see the storage units. We've had some leaks in one of the storage units. We're also gonna be having that roof addressed as well as our district, uh, the transportation and maintenance building has a few leaks. Um, James King Roofing is gonna come in and fix those things. And then we're gonna get some downspouts, or excuse me, um, gutters and downspouts on those storage units so that we keep the water from going in once it comes off the roof. Cause that's also happening now. So again, thinking about these things kind of holistically and trying to address everything. Renovation of grounds and facilities, kind of another level that is addressed in the levy proposition that's on the ballot. That's a perfect way to capture what's being done right now. Uh, so when we think of renovation, this isn't being done this summer, but it's already scheduled for next year. We're gonna be completely, we're gonna be sanding down the gym and auxiliary gym floors and going back down to the maple and completely refinishing those next year because they're in terrible condition right now. Um, we got uh, we've got some, some gaps in the flooring and we've got some um, crowning in there. We've just got some issues with that flooring that have to be addressed. We need to renovate the uh, surfaces in the tennis courts. Um, that's probably again, something that's gonna be done next spring and next year, next summer, but uh, it needs to be done. And then uh, we've already started working on the, we've already done quite a bit of work on the baseball and softball fields, as you may have seen out there. We had completely regraded, really effectively regraded the girl, the softball field. Put diamond dust in there. We brought two hundred yards in, hundred for each field and completely regraded. Planting grass along the side and addressing some of the basic drainage issues in the girls' softball field because there's weeks where they can't even practice when it gets a lot of rain in the spring. So we think that issue's gonna be addressed come this next year. There's a lot of other things that we need to do on those two fields. The plan is to renovate the dugouts for the baseball and softball. And get some siding up there, get some new roofing on there and really build that up so that the kids have a, a great place to be proud of to play. And that should complement everything that's done on the field. Um, we're working on lighting. I've had a um, urban electric group come in and or, excuse me, urban energy group come in and do an assessment on the lighting, waiting on a projection there around the stadium. Currently, we need to switch over to LED. We haven't done that yet. Uh, there's also lighting issues in the stadium, in the grandstand as well. I, we didn't even realize this until we went out and looked that day, but there's only two lights on the north side of that grandstand and the other two-thirds of the grandstand have no fixtures even. So we're gonna put fixtures in because that's a safety issue. It's, I imagine it's dark over there at night. So uh, and then finally, when we talk about furniture, we need to continue to move forward on updating our furniture for students. So we're finishing up the intermediate level this year, buying some desks and chairs. I'm waiting on an estimate from SBI on that right now, Saxton Bradley. And then we'll finish up with primary this next year. And then that should finish us up with new furniture for the kids at every level. And then I think when we think about looking ahead, we probably are gonna need to have conversation about staff furniture down the road and how we update the furniture in all of our buildings so that we raise the bar for everyone. So go to the next slide. And then construction, and this is a tough one because there's not as much construction that we do with a levy, but there are new systems that we put in place that we didn't have before. The electric expanding eighty, uh, the electric um, charging capacity. We've got a lot of questions as we talked about earlier around that. And right now we have one charger. And we've, but if we are gonna expand the capacity, our bus fleet to more electric, we're gonna need to address that issue at some point. And that's gonna remain, mean we need to really evaluate power issues out there. Cause we do have a limit in the current structure we have, possibly having to put in a new transformer in order to expand the charging stations to include more buses than just three, for example, which is about where we're capped right now. Um, things like parking. The bond is gonna address some of the parking issues. It's not gonna address all of them. We're still gonna need to think about the south campus here, the district office and what that might look like over the next few years. That's something that the levy could pay for. Uh, I think that's an dollar amount that's manageable within the levy thinking, but also up above it is the driveway to the community center. If you've ever been there, you're bottoming out half the time in some of those potholes. This summer in August, uh, we're gonna have that complete, we're gonna bring in probably about two hundred and fifty tons of new material. And it's gonna be completely regraded. Drainage is gonna be redone. This is gonna be a higher level upgrade than we've done in the past with some new material on the top. Um, it's not gonna be paved. We're not in a place where we can do that right now. But um, what we're gonna have is, we're gonna regrade that and then have a maintenance plan in place after that's done so that we continue to stay on top of that. And we don't have to put huge investments in it down the road. We can just keep it going and keep it nice and usable for our community partners and for um, the, the people who work there. Uh, ADA access, we've got a few entrances uh, at the high school that need to be addressed. The main entrance at the high school, we've got a couple of uh, doors, uh, entrances and egresses into the courtyard which don't have access. And that's a big social area. Kids need to have access in and out. Our students, yeah, uh, need ADA access there.
This is one of the things that we are working on in the bomb, but the need is now. We need students to be able to get access to the courtyard now. So it's one of the things he's going, he's a, going to address this time. We've talked with them and taken a team about how that will flow into the bond work, but this is one that couldn't wait that our students need to be able to be with their, their peers. So this is one that we brought to the table and I was like, no, move forward on that now.
Yep, that's a great example. Uh, we're looking at mat hoists for the mat room so that we can maximize the use of that space for PE. Uh, have it be safer, it's just gonna be safer and having people moving less of that heavy stuff. We're also upgrading our mats to a much lighter mat. I also want to say deconstruction, under construction. We do need to think about portables and storage units moving forward and what we're going to do with some of that, those spaces. And that's a question of evaluating what we're storing. Do we need to store it? Have we used it? Is it something we're going to keep? And then thinking about, do we get rid of some of these storage spaces? Do we really need them? Because they're right now, many of them are just, they're, they're also actively failing right now in terms of the structures, the roofs, and they're providing a maintenance demand that may not be worth, be, it may not have the payoff right now. So Paul and I are talking about that a lot.
Their evaluation with, when we mobilize with our general contractor, is this something that they can help us deconstruct in place? If we identify that it needs to go.
Yep.
So again, the bond and this is the area, the bond and levy kind of overlap on things that they can do. But we're actively trying to make sure that we're not going to try to do the same thing, so.
Yep. And then I think, then there's one piece here that's not in the levy proposition that I think is just as important as the other three. And that's making sure that we put systems in place to maintain what we have. Uh, so there, I identified several bullet points. There's a lot of others I'm sure that we could talk about. But when we talk about having appropriate equipment, Paul and I talk about this a lot. But making sure that we have the maintenance team, our custodial teams have the kinds of equipment they need. So for example, you know, we're buying a new lift for the maintenance team. Cause the one we've had for several years doesn't work anymore. We use the lift every week for all manner of projects, from lighting to windows to gutter repair to roof access to trimming trees where we can, where we have a level spot to do that. So those kinds of things, uh, making sure we're getting carpet, we're getting new carpet extractors for our custodians. Cause the ones that we have are 30 years old and constantly being repaired. And they're not helping anybody if they aren't working. And I'm already, since I've been here, I've put, we've put more money into repairing those. Finally, it was just done. We're not going to continue to put good money after bad. So we're buying four new carpet extractors, um, because they use them a lot and they use them at the same time. We're getting a new dishwasher at the high school. That thing is sucking up money like you wouldn't believe and it never is fixed. We're done with it. We're not going to, we're not going to continue to do that because it's not usable. So we're getting a new dishwasher and we're going to have a service plan for it. So appropriately functioning equipment, I think the way we think about things systemically and sustainably, this comes to the collaborative relationships that we have. So meeting with the custodial teams every week, making sure maintenance, my, I'm meeting with the maintenance team every Monday morning to set up priorities. And then we meet every day at six o'clock to talk about what we're doing for the day. And oftentimes our schedule, our plans change, but we talk about that too. That's something that, you know, they realize is very important to me that if there's something we're going to do differently, I want to know about it and be part of that decision-making process. So we're having those kinds of conversations and thinking very specifically about our purposes and what we need to do. And, you know, when emergencies arise, like the water line, that happens too. So, um, and I think the other piece, when we think about custodians, for example, we're looking at the new runs this year. They know we're going to prioritize bathrooms and locker room cleaning every day this next year. So that's going to mean completely redoing all the runs and making sure we're identifying exactly what everybody needs to be doing every day to prioritize those things that need to be prioritized and then communicating to staff what their expectations of us can be. So that they know that we're doing this and that there may be some things that we can't do every day or less often than they've done in the past because of the priorities, so that everybody understands that. Those are staff meetings that I'm going to attend in the fall so that they talk, they hear that from me directly. Staff development, when we get new machines, training people on the machines so they use them and they take care of them. We can't put machines in people's hands and then have them abuse them and then fix them a year later. So, um, making sure that we're also thinking about new ways of cleaning. Things like flat mopping versus loop mops. I didn't even know about that two months ago, but you know, custodial meeting the other day, we got taught, they, they were talking about it. And I said, all right, we're going to have somebody come in and we're going to redo the way we do the mopping. Cause there's different types of mopping you do in bathrooms versus other spaces, offices or whatever. We're going to go in, we're going to look at that because it's going to help us be more efficient with the staff that we have. Uh, effective communication, I touched on that, just making sure people know what's happening and why. Both managing expectations as well as making sure that people know they're supported. And also the other way, they're being heard. You know, if there's a need in the softball field, the softball coach is, needs to talk to me about that. I need to hear that with, and have the athletic director there too, and the principal there. So we're all understanding the same thing, hearing the same thing. And when there's a decision made, we all know why the decision was made and what they can expect moving forward and how that decision is going to inform future decisions and plans. Because we're in a place right now where the decisions we make are going to lead to more because there's a lot to do. You know, and there always is going to be a lot to do. It's just the nature of schools, you know? Um, building collaboration, community, having a sense of ownership, making sure that the staff in our operations program, understanding that they're central to the core mission. They are central to the core mission. We just had this conversation in the custodial meeting the other day. They are central to the core mission, they are important. We can't do what we do in classrooms without them doing what they can do and, and embracing their knowledge and their experience and building on it. And then I think the last thing is, is that there, you know, and Dr. Moschus talked about this there. You know, we've had the opportunity the last few years to have a levy and we're getting more focused now with the bond and having the levy and being able to use it. But in the absence of that prior, there's been a scarcity mentality that's developed in the district and people. And it's not unusual, a lot of districts have that when they don't have the resources and state funding continues to not support schools the way we hope, and also when enrollment is declining and there's. But here is an area where we can say yes now in ways that maybe we haven't been able to before. And so really helping people to recognize that there are things that we have to be, that, that are getting trimmed. You know, because they have to be, to be fiscally responsible. But there's also an opportunity to really add and build at the same time. So it's not, it's not about doing more with less. It's just about thinking about where we have the resources and prioritizing those resources. And people are having a voice seeing that already, seeing that they, they have a voice in that. And, and I think that's going to, as they see what happens over the next few years and hopefully with continued levy support and then the bond, that, that will, uh, just continue to help uh, maintain the sense of community that already defines this district. So, um, yeah, so I, what questions do you have? Gosh, I've talked a while.
I really appreciate the recognition that you're working within a, um, single lane of funding. So you, you're not trying to share funding with other projects when it comes to capital improvements. And that recognizing that means that there is some opportunity for spending and for dealing with things on a systemic level rather than in a Band-Aid level. Uh, so I really appreciate, um, that viewpoint that you're bringing to this, thank you.
I'm curious about the community center, which I believe is the old high school.
The old middle, yeah, the old, yeah.
Middle and high school, yes.
Yep, both.
Um, are the rents contemporary? And are they sufficient to maintain a, a maintenance fund for all the wear and tear on that facility? Uh, including the furniture that I assume is school property? Uh, the repainting, that kind of thing. Is there a schedule that says we have, uh, from the people who are paying to, to occupy this space? That that money is set aside for the purpose of maintaining that building and in a, in a competitive with other rental commercial space?
So I'm going to let, Paul, are you able to speak to?
Yeah, the, the funding that we receive from that isn't carved out necessarily to go back to the community center. It, it generates revenue for the district, but it's not dollar for dollar that we collect the money from the community center and it goes back into the community center. It, there's a rental agreement for them to occupy that space and we rent that space to them. But the money earned from there is just part of our local revenue that goes into the district general fund to pay district responsibilities. It's not one for one to maintain that facility.
However, Paul, what, what Dan did set up and, uh, you know, I know yes, you're, he's absolutely accurate in the way it, it is, but that community center has been, the community center has been running in the black since COVID ended. And so the money goes into the general fund, but it is tracked. Um, and I just want to be clear, the community center is a community center. It is not a commercially, uh, a commercial enterprise. It is not a for-profit enterprise, but it covers its own expense. And we have community partners in there who are a benefit to our community. So again, it, it's, it's, it's part of our mission and vision. But it does in fact generate more rent than expense. However, the facilities are ours to maintain at district expense. So the day to day is covered, but something like a roof failing is like you're a landlord, right? And you've got to buy the roof. You may or may not have collected enough rent to pay for the roof today, but eventually you'll, it'll, you'll come back to black. If that makes sense. But the community center was never designed to be a for-profit center.
Aren't the, aren't some of the occupants in fact making a profit?
Yes.
And so it sounds almost like we have a charity there that we are taxing ourselves to support people who are in business in a facility that they don't have to maintain.
It may sound that way, but that's not accurate. That's absolutely not accurate. They pay a common area maintenance fee, they pay rent. The, the district is not in a situation where it is not covering its expenses. That those, that those users are not covering their expenses.
The, uh, I, there's a, she used to be a shop down there, had some very expensive woodworking equipment.
Still does.
Uh, do we repair that equipment or do they pay for the repair and replacement?
They pay for the repairs. They, they pay for the repairs, absolutely. They pay for the repairs and they pay the rent to cover their space.
And they've also in many cases upgraded their own HVAC system in the spaces. So they've got put in, in many cases, the, the ductless heat pumps. So com- combined with grants as well as with their own front, funding their own money. They've put in heat pumps and received some credit from the district in rent in that. But they have fronted the money to make those changes themselves. And in that case, that saved us from updating the larger, more expensive, uh, up HVAC systems there. You know, say on the roof or in, or boilers that have gone into disuse.
Do district custodians clean that facility? Or are there some other commercial that the occupants who pay some rent pay for?
They, the custo-, yeah. The custodian in that building is our employee, but those renters pay for common area maintenance. So they cover the cost of that custodial service.
I encourage the district to do a very thorough reconsideration of the finances of the community center. The, when, when we have a, the, the levy that's coming out here or the bond even possibly. I don't suspect, I know I didn't understand that. And I'm, I'm, I'm quite surprised that this, this seems very lax and that the.
Rufus, if it seems lax to you, it's because I didn't make myself clear. We absolutely know how much income we make from the community center and how much we spend and we clearly make more than we spend. But your question that Paul answered was where does the money go? It goes back into the general fund, but we most certainly account for what rent we take in and what expenses we have. And we take in more rent than we have expenses.
I would just add that on a, on a philosophical level, not only are we more than breaking even financially by offering this facility for community use, but we are also enriching the lives of our students through offering this facility for community use. And many of the community partners that, um, occupy that space and pay us in order to occupy that space and financially enrich our ability to educate through occupying that space. They are also doing after-school programming or providing social services or providing supports for members of our community who are family members of students or extended family and neighbors of students. So all told, I would say the contribution of the community center to student wellbeing starts with putting us financially ahead and continues through making our whole society stronger for those kids.
And when we started the community center, we had conversations about how the roof would not be included within the rent costs and that that would be a burden of the district. So these are not new conversations, they've been on the table for the last eight years. We're just at that point now where we have to move forward with it. But that's always been the intention, that's always been within what the district understood our fiscal responsibility to be. It's also why when we did all of the upgrades and we, Dan did all the grant work to get, um, the building approved through whatever historical lenses that it had to be taken through. That, these are not new conversations Rufus.
And, and none of the bond money is being used on that building? Uh, levy money, capital improvements and technology levy money, yes, but none of the bond money. The bond money is being put in the buildings that are housed students.
I think it's also worth noting that the building is our asset and, um, has tremendous value to the district. And even if it were vacant and even if it were generating zero revenue, it would need to be maintained in order to be a protected asset as opposed to a deteriorating one. So I just think it's good business to take good care of your real estate. And the fact that we have tenants that generate more than enough funds to sustain it is icing on the cake.
Which was the intention when we established that model eight years ago?
Is, maybe I just don't understand. I know that if, if I own an apartment house, the people who are living in the apartment house would pay me enough to have a fund to see to it that their facilities were kept up. That the electricity, the plumbing, the roof, the, all that stuff, it would be my job to repair it. So we are in fact, an owner of a property that is being rented out. Is there a document somewhere that puts the history of, of, of the community center that I could read and the philosophy of what seems to me to be very generous and farming, commercial enterprise that otherwise might provide facilities that could be rented? If we're giving rental space or owning rental space that isn't paying for itself, we're being taken advantage of by ourselves.
It is paying for itself.
We make money renting the community center. Where, where you're in the black, the rent that they pay pays us more money than the utilities to run that facility.
And Rufus, to answer your question in terms of where you can go to look, all of the community center leases, all of the agreements, all of the financial informations are all located on board docs. In every financial presentation, there's a line item of what the community center brings in versus how much it costs to go out. It's in every budget, it's in every single lease with the rents and the agreements, whether they are for-profit or nonprofit, which have different rate brackets, is all put into board docs.
And just to, to provide a, an example from residential real estate world. I rent a home and I get rental income from the person who rents it from me. And that rental income is sufficient to cover my mortgage, my escrow fees, uh, my HOA dues and a little extra so that every spring I can make sure that the roof gets cleaned and the gutters get emptied. Uh, and it's, it's enough, it's enough for me to not be paying in order to provide a home for another family. But I also had a septic, septic system failure and a roof failure on that old building a few years ago. Had it been a rental at that time, I would not have gone to my tenant and said, the septic system and the roof will cost $35,000. So if you'd like to stay in this home, your January rent is going to be $35,000 more than anticipated. That would have been bad business. It would have been, um, unsustainable for the rental market to bear that kind of cost. I own the asset, I continue to benefit from its appreciation and caring for it is my financial responsibility. So with that example, we repair the roof on this building. The tenants cover the cost of day-to-day maintenance, wear and tear.
Perhaps the question is, um, the community center is in the black. So why do we need a levy for major repair, uh, infrequent? So why do we need a levy for major repair, uh, infrequent major repairs? Is that what you're trying to ask?
I'm just trying to understand why public property is not main, is not charging, apparently not charging enough to repair those things that are easily forecast. In the case of your septic system, you're a private enterprise. You you've chosen to do that. If you were a commercial enterprise, you would see to it that that kind of of maintenance, there would be a pool of money available to do it. It would be in the rents you charge and that money would be set aside. If that's not done here, I don't understand why. So I'll, I'll stop here. If you could just tell me who I should talk to to get the full history of this.
Christie can provide you some of the documents and I assume that Mr. Field can explain some of the financials if necessary on that. Yeah.
And I have a sense that part of the gap in communication here is that um this isn't a private homeowner or a commercial enterprise. This is a, a public enterprise. And so the, the accounting is much more complex and less straightforward.
Yeah, yeah. Let's get back to, are there any other questions? Uh, I don't have anything from the community at the moment, uh, the Zoom community at the moment. Are there any other questions on the uh facilities? Okay, we'll move on to our one policy note, uh, quickly, since I know that you need to leave soon. It is on the bond update, new policy six nine one one, which is the bond procedure and compliance policy. Is this Mr. Field or Dr. Moshe to give a brief explanation?
Sure, we are required when we sell the bond to have a procedure in in place. A lot of it's already addressed in the accounting manual, how we'll uh address it. A lot of it's stuff that I need to do to maintain. I need to do a, a training every year to know how to save bond compliance. Because with these bonds, we have to post stuff on a website uh called Emma. I don't remember what the acronym is. And it's just saying things like that, that I will do those things specifically in my position or someone in my position. It's required when we sell bonds to have this policy, a policy like this in place. When I went and quickly researched every district that sold bonds has basically this exact same boilerplate deal. It's just saying we will stay compliant and do the reporting and I will stay abreast of changes and reporting related to selling uh bonds.
Quick question, which I think you just.
Oh, go ahead, Joe. Sorry.
Thank you. Quick question, which I think you just answered. There, there's a clause in here about training and uh, and it sounds more expansive than what you just described. So my concern was that this is going to mandate this new type of training, but it sounds like it's limited to you.
No, it's limited to me that someone who monitors the the bond is responsible. And I've spoken to our bond counsel and the team that help us sell the bond, where I can get that from. Uh, Pacifica puts on a training that will keep me in compliance for this. So I'm, it's on my docket if things do to make sure I'm signed up for once the money lands.
Thank you.
Dr. Moshe, you had something?
Just I, I was actually going to address that question of training is if there is anything that the board would need to be trained on, that um we would be sure to comply with that. But really, this is all in Paul's capable hands. And lucky for us, he's had the experience of uh this before in his prior positions. So I feel really confident. He's looked through this. We've talked about it. Counsel has advised us, so I feel really uh good about the policy um and our compliance with it.
Yeah, after reading it through, I went through and searched for director and board just to see what was our responsibility and what was the experts' responsibility that we could trust that they would do properly. And there were like forty-some-odd directors and I was like, oh, oh. And then they're all director of finance. There are two points where the school board has response responsibilities in this and they're minor and advisory. So with that in mind, I'm totally uh behind saying to the experts, do you have any problems with this?
It's pretty straightforward and we're supported with uh the company to help us sell us bonds with these present or what needs to come. They let you know right away that make sure you have, have this done. So we're signed up with them and it's part of their service to us to sell the bonds, so.
And Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't really matter whether we have an issue with it. This is what we have to do in order to execute a bond.
That's what we put in our bond document that we would adopt this policy. We told them when we were selling it that it's on the docket for tonight to be reviewed and approved, so.
Uh, reviewed tonight, approved uh at the business meeting. Yeah. Any other comments or questions on this policy? Okay, uh, if someone does come up with them, we still have uh the uh business meeting to address those. I know that you have to head out. Uh, we're going to move on to the last thing on our agenda, which is goals. Uh, we did a, had a retreat on this, but we wanted to have an opportunity to look at what we, what we've worked on. I know that Director Greenharren has gone in and done a significant number of suggestions for benchmarks and uh that sort of thing as we move forward. And I also wanted to talk about moving from district goals to board goals.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. I didn't go in and change the, the goals themselves. I was suggesting um key results for Dr. Moshe. And so uh the, the changes to the goal wording are very minimal.
Yeah, um, we do have more opportunity to take a look at these. This is our opportunity to do so, but uh and suggest key indicators, as you mentioned, Director Greenharren. Uh, and then I want to see how we can translate them to board goal or goals as well.
I think before I head out, the one piece that I would say is that when we set the goals, we set them with the intention of not exhaustively changing them year over year and that they would stay consistent so that administration and staff would have time to actually implement them all the way through. So before I step out, I would just encourage my fellow board members to call in our goal number two like three years ago and to consider leaving them more the same than changing so that it does not create more pivoting across the district.
The question for you before you leave, a- as written from the last time we worded them, does, does that fulfill the, the philosophy of, of leaving them more of the same than different year over year?
I think that where we were heading by the end of the retreat at our last meeting was going way down into the weeds that would create significant changes that would push. And when we are, you know, having nuanced conversations over what does pride in our school mean? Like that's, I think we need to stay higher level than that and just keep them relatively the same so that they can have time to get traction and to move.
I had a similar, I had a similar concern with uh goal one, that we were pretty significantly changing direction on those. I felt that two and three uh felt like they were staying in the same vein, but that, that one had pivoted pretty hard. So I, I think that that's a good thing for us to talk about. Thank you for sparking the discussion as you head out the door. Yeah.
Um, Brooke?
Yes.
Just, just, just one comment or question, really. My plan was to bring a draft of the action plan um in August to the board based on the goals. I'm assuming that the board is thinking of approving the goals at the end of July uh at the business meeting.
That would be the hope, yes.
And then, yeah, and then in August at either the workshop, uh, business meeting, I will bring the draft of the uh action plan around it then.
Yes, yes, uh, and we've got suggestions in here for key indicators, uh, both what we had more broadly and then Director Greenharren's specificity added to several of them. But those are our suggestions for key indicators that we would think. And you would certainly flesh those out and make sure that they were within your purview and suitable.
Mm-hmm. Perfect. Thank you.
Um, so with Director Downs's uh suggestion in mind, I, I would like to take a look at uh goal one uh and, and see if we can compare that to last year's, uh, let me pull. So uh I'm going to just take a look and see what we had, go, go back to last year's goals so that we can compare. Okay. I was just going to go into the I, I'm not connected to the, I'm reconnecting to the document itself. Okay, here we go. Uh, and then I was just going to go in and add last year's social emotional learning, objective one, so we can compare it to what we have.
I think in the spirit of the board of directors says what and the staff determine how, we might be a little outside our lane here. The updating of systems is something that came through uh to me in my experience with um Christie when we went and met with tribal educational leaders and learned just how much uh data can be, can shape a, a student's access and outcomes. And then the um support of staff capacity to engage really came through our conversation around what would move that inclusive educational community from where it is to where it's headed. But I wonder if we're too much into how.
Uh, I, I wonder if perhaps I agree with you there and, and maybe we can shift some of that to the key indicators as opposed to the goal itself to allow some of the how from the goal, but make sure that it's included in the key indicators.
I wonder, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I wonder if we have community input on this topic around the draft goal versus the goal from last year.
Yeah, I'm, since I've not been part of this before, I wasn't sure how much you changed these at all. But I, I like, I, I like the idea that we went back to include um the words of um building school culture of care and belonging. But I actually would wondered about the word deepening. You know, what I'm really interested in this, like that these ideas are actually embodied and happen on a day-to-day basis. So, so anything that just suggests that, that feels a little bit meatier, um, I would really support. So I, I like the beginning of that, um, evolving and participating in an inclusive educational community, which they are proud.
So that was last year's goal?
Yeah, sometimes, I mean, that feels just, I'm not sure what that means. I, um, I can, I can, I definitely see the point of moving some of that, the second part of that new goal into the um metrics. And because it is, it is in that one survey.
Right.
So just from my perspective, what I'm noticing, not just in this school district, but everywhere that there's, when there's discomfort about race and gender and all these things, things just get stagnant and they actually stay harmful. So what I want is this movement to like, kind of start to moving, stir things up so that people build capacity, build comfort. And if it, it doesn't have to be in the goal, but as long as there's activity around it.
I really like the wording of deepen because it gets beyond doing, making surface level changes and it, it speaks to addressing things at a systemic level rather than putting a Band-Aid on them. I, I really appreciate that, that insight and I think that that's something we can definitely work with.
I agree, and I think it could be as simple as where we moved from build a school culture to we will continue building a school culture. It could simply be deepen a school culture of care and belonging.
Yeah, I like that as well. I wanted to come back to your comments about what versus how. I really think that pulled us up in a, in a really good way. What I'm struggling with is um where on the spectrum of what versus how we, 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 we land? I could see us saying uh, we will continue to deepen a school culture of care and belonging, period. That's the, the, the furthest on the, the what um with the, the least specificity. Or it could continue uh by updating our systems and practices to interrupt oppression and, and stop right there. I got my maybe, my, my question for you and for the group at large is, is uh the concept of updating systems and practices, is that more what or is that more how?
I, I think we can direct where, like, like if we're saying with a focus on systems. And Dr. Moshe, please feel, and other administrators who are here, please, and community members, please feel free to chime in and on where you see that difference. But I think that it's legitimate for us to say, we want to go into the system, we want you to look at the systems. We, we don't say what to do with the systems, but we'd like you to look beyond surface level improvements to, to look at the systems.
Right. It could, it could be something like continue to deepen our school culture of care and belonging with attention to systems and staff inter and intrapersonal capacity or something along those lines. Um, and I was thinking not even updating our systems and practices, but maybe just with particular attention to systems, practices and staff inter and intrapersonal capacities. There's something about that um kind of asking people in the system to move past the discomfort around discussion of identities of privilege and oppression into um feeling forward together, feeling forward, not failing forward. But there is something about really asking that this be a year where ways to do that harder work are explored.
I like the idea of having uh the measurables as examples because I think that'll give real clarity to what you're looking for. Which I support. I just think that it, it needs more meat for me to be able to really explain to staff what the board is asking us to do. So by giving it the, the measurables, it, it'll help define it.
Yeah, and there's, there's already a key indicator, well, a suggested key indicator tied to the C metric on um uh capacity to discuss um address conflict. And there was the, the other one about discussions on um uh race and oppression. I can't remember the exact wording.
I remember the consultant Ronnie talking about belonging a lot. And I thought that she, she has a sense for which of the indicators from that survey would measure that. That's the other piece I wondered about.
There's a couple there. One, one of them for the staff belonging is the I-they gap. And also in our ability to influence what happens in classrooms. That, that I-they gap is also encompasses some of that. But then there are specific questions about belonging and pride in the school and that, that sort of thing as well.
I think the one about, you know, actually having conversations and getting a feedback from students to be that um to, to improve. Uh, cause my, quite frankly, if we talk to staff and say, the board's looking at this metric, you know, the, the idea that somebody would just say, well, okay, if that's the metric, then I'll answer this question differently. But students won't do that. Students, um, it's more likely that if they feel like we address conflict, that they're going to answer that we address conflict. And it could be just a language shift, right? Let's talk about hard things. But anyway, I, I, I find that relying, we have to rely on some kind of data. But when we rely on the specifics of we're going to reduce the I-they gap on the CEE survey, then we get answers that support reducing the I-they gap on the CEE survey. And so how do we get it to be real?
Yeah, it's easy to either teach to the test or learn to the test. Uh, yeah, that's definitely something that we have to be wary of. And I don't know how to solve for that besides tying it to multiple.
Well.
Yeah.
And that's my job to figure out with my team is how do we, how do we measure that? But I appreciate the metrics here to say, these are the kinds of things where, you know, we're suggesting would measure that improvement or movement.
This is a little word smithy. I was, sorry to interrupt. I was just gonna say to I was sorry to interrupt. I was just gonna say to continue to deepen feels a bit redundant and deepen implies continuation. But sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt mid thought.
No, you're fine. I just it was a good interruption.
I wonder, Dr. Moshe, how you feel about the reference to systems, practices and staff intra and interpersonal capacities? Do you find that to be helpful additional guidance? Or does it distract from? Or would you say it's neutral?
That's kind of where I was with, I need metrics to help describe what that means because it's very high level.
Right. But if the metrics are tied to those um, three areas of attention, it would feel like useful guidance?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
I want to note that our other two goals also go into the reason why we're providing this guidance. Uh, academics, we will continue to use best practices that nurture and create innovative learning environments supportive of every stu- supportive of every student's resilience and success in the future they choose. And logistics has the, we will create through this, we'll create the conditions for new superintendent success. So I wanted to note if we wanted to do that, or if we think that the mention to deepening the community of care and belonging is that.
Great question. I like parallel structure, but I do sort of feel like the having a, a culture of care and belonging is the outcome we seek.
Okay.
And so it's just placed at the beginning rather than the end of the sentence.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to make sure that we were covering that, that we felt that we were covering that and that we could express that to Dr. Moshe and the teams beneath her. Okay, so we, we have uh, a tweak on uh, objective one. Are we happy with that currently?
I do want to mention a caveat to what I just said, which is, you know, the, the school culture of care and belonging is the desired outcome. But the why is that students are being harmed by systemic oppression in our buildings every day and in every building of every public school in this country, I would imagine. And it needs to be interrupted and it needs to be interrupted now by the people who are here now um, with some skill. I don't think that's appropriate to put in the goal, but it's the why.
Well, and does that get to our mission and vision as opposed to our goals?
Right.
Yeah. So, so if we have the, if the mission and vision are the why and the goals are the what, and then the uh, key indicators are the how.
Right. And the flip side, one why is students are being harmed right now every day. The other side is everybody does better when there's a culture of care and belonging. And when systems and practices and staff intra and interpersonal capacities are better in the area of care and belonging, student outcomes are gonna be exponentially better. But I, I don't think that needs to be said here. I just think it needs to be
Okay.
Considered.
Are, are folks happy if I take this new wording and make that the current objective one? Okay, I'm gonna take out the old uh, last year's and I'm gonna shift this down to here. Take out that. Okay. And I'll hit it in red just that we know that that's new. Okay, uh, so that's the social emotional learning objective one and keeping in mind Director Downs's uh, conversation starter and suggested, suggestions on that. I feel like we've addressed that. I, that was a concern of mine as well. So I'm glad that we've addressed that. Do we want to move on to academics? Do, do we have any issues with this one? I feel like the major issues here are the key indicators and that's what's important because academics is basically, we, we want to improve academics always. And so it's really about what key indicators we choose for what emphasis are the administration is going to place there.
And this is the area personally for me where I feel I most want the input from educators.
Agreed.
Agreed. And I felt really good about our discussion at the last meeting around leaving this goal largely unchanged so that the significant progress we saw in this school year can be continued.
Um, quick question, what do, how do we feel about goal versus objective? I, I'd like to hear your rationale behind changing that.
Certainly, yeah. So the, the um, accountability framework we're using is called objectives and key results. Where the objectives are the, these big three ones, they're, they're the broad headlines. And then the key results are the smart goals underneath. Um, I, I my, my intention was to um, have us map to the, the, the standard nomenclature.
Done and done. Anything, so I, I agree that this is where we need the key indicators from the educators because we've talked about what's important. We've provided some suggestions on where they are.
And we're gonna continue moving improvement plans and go from where we are to the next level. So it makes the most sense to keep this goal.
Yes.
As it was.
And yes.
Let us come to you with our intentions.
Sounds good. And we'll make sure that we agree with them and then we'll go forward with them. So uh, objective three. Mission aligned use and through mission aligned use and stewardship of our district assets, land, facilities, people, money, institutional knowledge and time, we will create the conditions for a new superintendent's success. I, that.
The only thing I wondered about last time I was here is, is so much emphasis on the superintendent's success versus the district's success and every
So, so I can only a- address my thought process on that is my, my thought process is so much of how the superintendent works affects how much how the district works. And we've seen that with Dr. Moshe's expertise here in shepherding along or starting or otherwise providing leadership and direction to so many of these initiatives and ideas that what we can do as a board or what we're asking them to do in logistics is set it up so the next superintendent can have a smooth transition because I felt that that would have a strong impact on student outcomes um, through a variety of things. But yeah, that, that was where my head was, was the logistics on this is the bond and the new superintendent this year. Like those are the two big things, implementing the bond that the community has passed and hiring on and making sure that the new superintendent is successful. Uh, those are the major, yeah.
Well, well, what we know about district successes is that consistent leadership over time is going to make the biggest impact. Um, and so I think the board's only employee is the superintendent. And in turn, that's what the district's success is all about. So you can word it um, as district success or superintendent success, but ultimately the goal being given to the new superintendent is or the current superintendent in preparing the stage for the next superintendent. So and by the way, just on that topic, I think what we saw from our two new administrators tonight is a good indicator that we're on the right track. They both did a wonderful job and I really appreciate their leadership.
Agreed, agreed.
For wholeheartedly. I also think there's something to be said for a superintendent prospective applicant, prospective candidate, looking at our goals and thinking, wow, they are ready for me. They even put it in one of their, you know, three primary objectives.
Yes.
There's something about seeing that that would make a newcomer to the role. If I were in their shoes, I would feel incredibly welcome to uh, step into a position in a district like that.
This Diana, this one to me speaks to the idea of a district being ready. Uh, we talked about that inequity that they, you know, regardless of who the new superintendent is, we need to be ready for their entry and be supportive of that.
Yeah, no, I appreciated your explanation, Joe. I, I'm gonna go into the weeds just a really quickly. I would encourage you and whoever's gonna make, do the benchmarks and um, to really look at what the equity team came up with in terms of um, the, the plan in the last couple. Cause I think especially the
Yep.
This, this, this objective is connected to the work Christie did around hiring and retention and diversity. So I think there's some good ideas from what the equity team developed.
And my draft uh, metrics that I put for August uh, already includes them. I appreciated them from Kyla. She sent them ahead and um, they, they really fit what we're trying to do.
Yep, that's wonderful advice. And I also think that um, creating the conditions for a new superintendent's success also means making sure that the qualities of what we achieve through objective one carry through in our recruitment process, for instance.
I did note in there, uh, under the hiring and retention, make sure we get that equity uh, committee input. Any other thoughts on all of these goals? I'd like to turn to our board, uh, the board members that we have here now and look at board goal or goals. It took some time to put together last year's and I'm okay if it takes a little bit of time to get last year's together, but I do want to look and see how we can take the goals we're giving the district and translate them into what we as a board are going to do this year. That may be a bridge too far for this uh, workshop.
If we didn't look at them now, is there space in a future workshop? I have a, I, I have a, I feel a tension between the urgency to look at them, but also the reality that we didn't approve our own board goals until late in the year. This past school year. And so I want to give them time to for us to um, achieve them.
It looks like we could have some time in September. I mean, there's a little bit in August, but I, I we're, we're already focusing August on the superintendent search, that, that first meeting in August. So I didn't want to take away from that. But uh, September, we're looking at uh, some communication with the Port of South would be, but that's the only thing currently on the workshop. So we might build, might have time there.
I may need to miss a September meeting, but I would really love for the discussion to include at least four of our board members. And I would encourage us not to try to undertake this with just three.
I hear that and agree with that and think that's fantastic. At which point I will ask to see if there are any final uh, comments or questions on the goals for tonight. Okay, uh, thank you very much. Good night. This meeting is adjourned.